Good evening. Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our cosponsors, welcome to this forum with candidates running for Pierce County Council Districts Five and Seven. My name is Katie Baird. I'm a professor at the University of Washington and joining me this evening is Ruth Ogden, a senior at the University of Washington. We begin this forum, to begin this forum, I'd like to give the land acknowledgement. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 102 years has been working to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, l w v t p c dot org. We also influence public policy through education and advocacy. Candidate forums such as today's event provide an opportunity for the public to compare and contrast the candidates before voting in the general election. All candidates were invited to this forum.
The candidates for Pierce County this evening in ballot order for District Five are Marty Campbell and Nancy Daly-Slotnick, and for District Seven, Robin Denson and Paula Lonigan. Dave Morley and Tim Tuker let us know that they could not participate in this forum. This year's general election is November 8th. Ballots will be mailed out on Friday, October 21st, if you are a registered voter. If you are not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote wa dot gov by October 31st. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM November 8th. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website, l w v t p c dot org. Questions have been prepared by the League of Women Voters and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via a phone call to two five three three zero six 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 one. That is two five three three zero six 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 one. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Teri Baker of the L V. She will hold up cards to let candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see the moderators and the timekeeper. Please stay in mute until it is your time to speak.
The candidates have been given ground rules in advance, which include, among other provisions, that they will adhere to the rules of common courtesy and will not comment on the other candidates, but will focus on the issues and that there will be no other recordings made of this forum. Could we please confirm that each of you has agreed to these rules? You can confirm by a nod or a thumbs up. Thank you. The opportunity to answer the question first will rotate among the candidates and the closing statements will be given in opposite order of opening statements. Please do not talk unless it is your turn. Please mute yourselves when it is not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. Let's begin.
Marty Campbell, please.
All right, opening statement. Hi, my name is Marty Campbell, Pierce County Council, District Number Five. Thank you all very much for joining us here today. Do appreciate this opportunity to get out and talk a little bit about myself. I actually grew up on a small farm outside Omaha, Nebraska, made my way out here in the early 90s and chose Pierce County as a place to make my home and open up two small businesses. After nearly 20 years of entrepreneurship, I was elected Tacoma City Council, representing the East Side and South End for eight years. And then also after that was elected to Pierce County Council about four years ago. And I'll tell you, the last four years hasn't been easy with the pandemic right in the middle of it. And now we're facing issues coming out of the pandemic that are our challenge homelessness and affordable housing. We need to be working on sustainable solutions. We need to make sure that we're addressing the rising crime rates that we've had and refill our police department and corrections departments. And we also need to make sure that we're working with everyone across the county to address many of the issues that we see from rising inflation. None of these are anything that we can do individually, but that we need to be working as an entire council to make sure that we're addressing the issues and putting forward policies in a respectful compassionate way that gets the job done. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Marty. Nancy Daly-Slotnick, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Nancy Slotnick and I'm running for Pierce County Council District Five. I grew up in southwest Ohio. My father was killed when I was four years old. And at 18, I joined the Army. Five years into my military career, I landed here at Fort Lewis in 1987 and quickly decided that Washington State and Pierce County would be my permanent home and that I truly loved everything about our beautiful state here. I went on to finish a 25-year military career, met my husband on Fort Lewis, who was finishing up a 20-year military career himself. We raised our four children right here in Pierce County. And after he retired from the Army, he started a small business that I then joined a few years later when I retired from the Army. So we've been business owners here for over 20 years. And a few years ago, I became really disturbed by the rising crime in our area. For most of the 30 years that I've lived in my current home, I'd been watching our crime rates steadily improve. And about two years ago, our crime really started to skyrocket. Some of that I can blame on the pandemic. Some of it I can blame on tying the hands of our police and the way we have poorly treated our police officers. So I have a strong commitment to get our crime rate turned around, deal with our homelessness situation, keep our roads and transportation running smoothly and effectively, and keep our taxes as low as possible and show fiscal responsibility with taxpayer money. So I respectfully ask for your vote and I appreciate you having this forum to give us our time to express our views.
Thank you, Nancy. Robin Denson, please.
Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all of you for being with us this evening. I'm Robin Denson and I am really excited about the opportunity to serve Pierce County District Seven as a councilperson. I'm a mom of two teams and have been honored to serve the city of Gig Harbor and the residents here as a city councilperson. I'm also involved in many, many organizations serving the community in a range of issues ranging from the environment and economic development to helping children, families, seniors, and veterans in need. Serving as a county councilperson is a big job and it really requires an understanding of a lot of interrelated issues. I understand the issues our county is facing. These issues are not new to me either professionally or as a local government elected official currently. And I've got the experience and the passion and the commitment to accomplish real sustainable solutions, not only for our district but for our county. I'll work to reduce crime by supporting our first responders, our judicial department, and our community service providers, bringing everyone together. And my proven track record in this area already has earned me the endorsement of our Gig Harbor Police Officer Union. I'll address the immediate homeless crisis by making sure we get folks that need housing into stable housing immediately while also intentionally attacking root causes of homelessness and working on prevention as well. And we've got a lot to do to protect our environment. These are just a couple of the issues that I'm excited to work on and ready to work on. I'm honored to have earned the endorsement of the News Tribune, Congressman Derek Kilmer, Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, Washington Conservation Voters, and the Tacoma Pierce County Black Collective. I've always had a heart for community service and that combined with my local government experience and my relationships and proven effectiveness really means that I will be able to hit the ground running and accomplish wonderful things for our county in collaboration and partnership with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robin. Now we move on to the questions and each candidate will have 90 seconds to address these questions. Question one. The comprehensive planning process leading to the submiddle of a new plan in 2024 has begun. What do you hope to see in this upcoming comprehensive plan that is different from the current plan? Nancy Slotnick, please.
Well, different than the current. We have, oh, okay, I thought I was muted. We have done a lot of work on these comprehensive plans over the last few years and I'm really hoping to continue to move the comprehensive plan to end homelessness forward more. One of the things I really like about the plan that we have now is that it's a hand up, not a handout. And I think that that is critical to addressing the issue of homelessness, that people have an invested interest in their own success and in keeping themselves moving towards a housing. I also want to continue to advance the issues that are affecting our transportation. So I think I'm more about continuing to advance programs that we already have in place than making huge changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Robin Denson, please.
Yes, thank you. I am very excited about being involved in the comprehensive plan for 2024. Some of the things that I will be looking at is making sure we've got a strong climate change component. I really think that needs to be part of everything we do because it's vitally important for public safety that folks have clean air to drink or clean air to breathe, clean water to drink, and good soils to grow our food in. We also know that climate change affects our most vulnerable populations the most. And so that's really important to me. Development is really important, making sure that we are focused on promoting ways that we can create affordable housing and housing in general in areas that make sense, areas that have transit and services, including law enforcement and sewer and septic and parks and sidewalks and all the things that make a strong community, while protecting our rural areas and our critical habitats that are so important, not only for environment, but just for the character of who we are. So making sure part of that includes a strong emphasis on affordable housing as well and trying to help some of the nonprofits and for-profits be able to develop more affordable housing in a way that works for them. Mass transit, public transit, and more environmentally focused public transit is important to me, more electrification and more promotion of ways that people can walk and bike and get to work and school in a healthy way that really builds a strong community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell, please.
Thank you. I think a lot of it was just covered, but I think when we look at the comprehensive planning coming in 2024, we need to first and foremost make sure that we're focusing on the budget that we're going to be passing next year as a biennial budget. 2020, we'll be doing it 2023 for the 24, 2024, 2025 and beyond. And how we set up that budget will drive a good portion of what we look at in our comprehensive planning, where we want to invest the dollars. Then we need to come back and reinforce it with the policies that then allow those dollars to go where we intend. We need to make sure that we're building livable neighborhoods and that we have, when we're looking at the transportation elements, that we're building both for jobs and the people who live here, that we're adhering to Vision Zero policies that make sure that we're putting pedestrians, bicyclists, and all users of our roads as priority so that we have safe environments for people on the transportation networks. And that when we're looking at density, that we're including commercial and business spaces that coexist with in our communities with both market rate and affordable housing so that people can live and work in the communities, in the same communities. Most of all, we need to make sure we're going out listening to the people and what they want these comprehensive plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
A reminder to the audience, if you have questions that you would like to ask the candidates, you can text them to two five three 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 zero six 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 one. Two five three three zero six 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 one. Second question, what steps can be taken to assure that the planning process engages people in marginalized and underrepresented communities? Robin Denson?
Yes, you know, I think the biggest challenge is outreach. I hear all the time, you know, as a city council member, that often things come before our council and people are like they had no idea. Once we start implementing something, then people sometimes, you know, get upset because of the way it was implemented. So it's really, really important. We do everything we can to communicate what's going on to our population. It's something I'm known for in the city of Gig Harbor. I have a newsletter. I've got Facebook. I do videos. And still, not everybody hears about what's going on. So I look forward to working with my fellow council members to really do a lot of outreach, whether it's all the methods that I just mentioned, whether it's postcards, whether it's reaching out to community organizations, that's really important, reaching out to faith communities, figuring out where folks are and how we can get the news out. Using trusted messengers, just like the health department did when it was looking to get the news out about COVID vaccines, really, really strategically and creatively thinking of ways that we can communicate, especially with marginalized communities and communities that may not always have a tradition of engagement, signage, you know, things on buses. We've really got to do a better job of making sure folks are involved and also inviting folks in from these marginalized communities to participate on our boards and commissions. Because once they're engaged and they're part of the process, I think that they will help us getting the word out to their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Nancy Daly-Slotnick?
You know, this is something that I've spent a lot of time thinking about as I'm out doorbelling for this campaign. I've reached almost 10,000 doors and what I find is that we have a huge number of people in our communities who feel like they've been largely ignored by our elected officials. I can't count the number of doors where I've heard that no one has ever come to my door before. So how does keep those people engaged after the election is going to be one of my number one priorities? Whatever methods we can take to get out to them. And I honestly have thought about whether or not that answer is doorbelling after I'm elected, just literally going to people's doors to make sure that people get that opportunity to share what they feel about what's going on in their communities. Because yes, we do have huge portions of our population who don't go to community meetings or come to council meetings and maybe even aren't on the internet to get those regular updates from their council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Marty Campbell?
Thank you very much. A great question, something that we work a lot on. And particularly when we see changes in local media and the ability to reach out in traditional ways, we have to be working twice as hard to make sure we're connecting not just to the residents of Pierce County, but including the marginalized communities. This can mean using participatory budgeting programs where we actually intentionally take small communities and listen to what they say and help them decide where they want the money spent. We need to make sure that we're looking at our health disparities and implementing our equity index so that we're measuring where these disparities are and ensuring that we're using that guiding principle to where we spend our money. When I was on Tacoma City Council, District Four was dead last in voter participation. And took it upon myself and some others to change that by making sure that we were communicating over and over, encouraging and inviting people to vote and participate in democracy. And in the last set of elections, it came in third of the five council districts in the city of Tacoma. And we need to continue that trend. But what it is, is really just being, talking with people, being honest with them and inviting them in and then listening to them once you've invited them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Next question. The largest single source of greenhouse gas emissions in this region is from transportation. What measures would you support to reduce these transportation impacts? Nancy Daly-Slotnick, please.
Well, for starters, I think that one of the things we need to do is we always, when we are looking at environmental policy, we need to make sure that whatever we're looking at doing is actually going to be better than what we're replacing. We're not necessarily doing a very good job of that. And I'll use electrification and electric cars as a prime example. Electric cars have zero emissions while they're running, but their emissions in the manufacturing process, starting with the mining of the rare earth minerals, are dramatically higher than our normal combustion and internal combustion engines. And then we have to deal with the disposal of that battery at the end of life. So we have to look at a full life cycle when we're looking at environmental policy and not just at that point in time of while that item is running. So I think that we need to be very thoughtful about our environmental policy and about how we bring it forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Marty Campbell, please.
Thank you. Reducing greenhouse gases is vitally important. All we need to do is look at the mountain out. Well, we can't see it because of the smoke from the wildfires. But when we can, it wouldn't be the bright white that's in my background. It's going to be very rocky because we're losing glaciers up there. We, as a county, have to deal with flooding issues, both coming down the mountain faster than ever before because of the lack of glaciers holding it and rising sea levels. We're one of the few counties in the nation that has to deal with that. So greenhouse gas is one of those components. We need to make sure that our transportation network invites all users and is safe for all users, for pedestrian, for bicyclists, and that it's convenient for those who want to ride public transit. And yes, electrification of our transportation systems. We are leading as a county in electrification uniquely in land, sea, and air. We have our own ferry system and we'd love to look at electrifying that. We're looking at electrifying our public transit system and what we can do at our airports for electric aviation that's coming in. When we talk about electric cars, there's a lot of scare tactics out there around a lot of them. But what we have is every major manufacturer now making them and with good reason. The batteries are rated for 500,000 miles or more. They're fully recyclable when they're done and can be put back into use. And the mining that goes on, that is that, the mining of oil is equally as dangerous as many of these others. So let's just look at the science. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Robin Denson, please.
Yes, so we know that Pierce County has a number of overburdened communities and the Health Equity Map shows, for example, along I-5 corridor that there's a lot of health equity disparities that we really need to focus on because everyone wants to live in a safe and healthy community. So we've got some good opportunities coming our way. The Inflation Reduction Act has 369 billion dollars for climate projects and it has federal funding for electrification of vehicles, in particular for electrifying diesel trucks. And that is a lot of our issues with transportation particulates, pollution particulates along the I-5 corridor. So that's something that we should be actively pursuing. The port has a zero emission truck collaborative going on and I would love the county to play a more active role in helping to move medium and heavy trucks more towards electrification and zero emission. There are some cases where vessels and larger trucks might work better with a green hydrogen model, but again, the science is there and we can look at where the benefit really plays out. We really need to develop more electrification infrastructure for cars and trucks. That's something that we're doing in the city of Gig Harbor, putting more places for folks to charge up. We're electrifying our fleet, so I'm very excited about that. And on the county council, I'll work on that as well. And models have shown that the greatest greenhouse gas reductions are going to come from electrification. The science is going to continue to get better and I will be here to support that.
Thank you, Robin.
A quick clarification to the audience. The phone number that we have been distributing is one that you should call and not text. It doesn't receive texts. Again, that number is two five three three zero six 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 one. So if you have a question, please call that number and state your question. And if you've already texted that number, please now call them with your question. Okay, as more people can invest in electric vehicles in the county, there will still be congestion issues. How could congestion be reduced? Marty Campbell?
Thank you. And that's a great question because electric vehicles, while reducing greenhouse gases, doesn't end the congestion. What we need to be doing is equally building out our public transportation networks and our alternative modes of transportation, bicycling, skateboarding, longboarding, pedestrian, and really building the networks and helping people, making sure that we have opportunities for people to live closer to where they work. Creating incentives for that, when we're building, that we have commercial on the first floor with residential above it, that we go back to rebuilding community centers that people live, work, and play in the same neighborhood and so that they're not having to travel all across the county or to additional counties to work. Make sure we have those jobs here. Simply put, if you build high-capacity roads, people fill them up. If you build roads that get people to where they want to go and make sure that you're investing in finding any disparities that we have in our neighborhoods and putting the services that we don't have back into the neighborhoods that they've, the services that they've lost, you can keep them from having to travel as much and make sure that we're supporting people with and working on broadband across the entire county. I think many of us are very fortunate to have good internet service, not the entire county is. And so their options to be able to telecommute are limited. We need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Nancy Daly-Slotnick?
Thank you for that question. I think that one of the things we need to do is, yes, absolutely, bring more jobs into Pierce County so people can live closer to where they work. We have a huge number of people living in Pierce County who are commuting to Seattle and King County for their jobs and we need to do things to fix that. We say this is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Let's make it that. But also, we need to make sure that we are building out our transportation infrastructure. When we have things that will reduce congestion, like the Canyon Road Connection project, we need to move forward with that. And we have to remember that that's not only a transportation corridor for cars and trucks, but it has active transportation built right into the plan that has been designed for that project. All those last, the east extension or the north extension of the project are built with sidewalks, with bike paths. The bridge across the Puyallup River even has a suspended bike path and walking paths to improve active transportation. So let's move forward with that so that we have good transportation for all modes of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And I see that Paula Lonergan has joined us. Would you like the question again, Paula Lonergan?
Yes, please.
As more people can invest in electric vehicles, there will still be congestion issues. How can congestion in the county be reduced?
Well, I cannot say that I disagree with what I've heard thus far. I do believe that we need to make a greater effort to bring employers into our county, once again, to reduce the number of people who have to commute out of the county. I did that almost my entire career and that was very unfortunate. And I would like to see people have places where they can live close to their work if they choose to do that so that they won't have to commute quite as far. Ideally, it would be nice to have family wage jobs where people, in communities where people live. That way you can reduce congestion and maybe allow for more options to commute to work if that's necessary, but a lot of people still have to commute. Not everyone will be able to do that with where they currently live, but I would like to see that happen. And I think we need to put a little more emphasis on bringing employers into our community and help them feel welcome to do that.
Thank you, Paula. Robin Denson?
Okay, and a lot of what I'm going to say is going to be echoing of some of the things that have been said. Um, public transit is important, particularly rapid public transit. We want to make it easy for people and convenient for people to to get acclimated to using public transit because for a lot of people it's new and we really want more folks to, to be utilizing it and finding that advantageous. There's some places in our county like the Key Peninsula in my district that doesn't have any public transportation. So we need to figure out solutions that are right-sized for that community and really fit a more rural model because they want it. Um, broadband is important. Again, the Key Peninsula has all sorts of broadband issues. Folks can't telecommute there. Kids can't go to school. Like, my daughter goes to school at TCC and she does a lot online. Kids on the KP can't do that, so they're having to drive back and forth. It's gas money for them and it's also congestion on the roads. And then something that's mentioned that I'll just double down on is encouraging people to live in areas where we have services already. So the Growth Management Act, you know, I'm a big fan of. Is it perfect? No. But we want to make sure that we're encouraging people to live where there's jobs, where there are schools, where there are sidewalks already, where we've got law enforcement, where we've got public no water and sewer and parks and all the things that make a healthy community. And then encouraging more jobs here in Pierce County. So we're not a bedroom community for Seattle. We've got good living wage jobs here so folks can live and work in the same place and really be part of their communities and have a higher quality of life.
Thank you, Robin.
Next question. As a reminder to all candidates, you have ninety seconds. Transit service in Pierce County is limited to certain parts of the county and is more needed where the services and more is needed where the services exist now. What action should be taken to expand this service across the county? Nancy Day, Nancy Daly Slotnick, please.
Um, I'm so glad that you brought up expansion outside of the current service area. I think it's critical that we reach uh out further into our communities with transit service. Um, my son is a shuttle rider. Uh, he's developmentally disabled and shuttle is his transportation to work. Fortunately, I do live within the Pierce Transit Service area, but a huge percentage of our population does not live within the Pierce Transit Service area. Robin brought up the, the Key Peninsula is not served by transit. Um, I have friends whose kids have developmental, whose adult children have developmental disabilities and those parents are having to take their children to work uh on the other side of the bridge. So expanding out into all of our areas and really reaching into the Frederickson area, the Bethel School District area, um Dr. Siegel in Beth, in Bethel School District has mentioned that he's only got three miles of his school district covered by transit. That area is dramatically underserved and has a dramatically underserved population. So it's critical that we expand our, our transit out to get to everyone. And thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Paula Lonergan, please.
I think I'm on, I'm not muted. All right. This is a very important service that people have been asking for out in the Key Peninsula area and actually beyond Gig Harbor. We know we have problems with um the number of individuals who are employed uh working for our transit services. We need to have more bus drivers, but I do believe we need to find ways and look at what is going on as it relates to how transit is funded. I'm not saying I would support having a tax, but I do know that um there is an option available to us. But we need to look at what is currently available and if there are ways to service those communities that are currently underserved. I have a suspicion that that's a problem because of the funding that Sound Transit gets, but I think that is, there is a very big need. And I think we could facilitate more people being employed and able to do more for their families if they could leave their community, which they choose to live in, and commute to places where there is employment available to them.
Thank you, Paula. Robin Denson, please.
I think it's important to look at the whole system because there's some areas like the Key Peninsula and, and there's other parts of, in Pierce County as well that are similarly underserved by transit. There are some areas that don't have transit at all, and we really need to look at what transit should look like for them. There's other models in other rural communities around the country that, that do transit a little bit differently. And maybe in a more affordable and efficient model that, that might work for places like the Key PKP or unincorporated Gig Harbor or other areas. So some areas need transit. There's other areas that have transit, but we need to really look at the data and make sure the routes are correct. We have one bus in Gig Harbor and it doesn't even go to our community college. I don't get that. My son goes to school in Tacoma and he goes to Sammy, which is part of the Tacoma School System. And my whole plan was for him to take the public bus there, but it won't, he cannot get on a bus in Gig Harbor and get there in time in the morning. So now I'm driving him. Talk about congestion back and forth across the bridge with, with the gas money and the tolls. Um, and, and that's a challenge. I know there's been some studies done that some areas need transit services that go later in the evening and go on the weekend. So I think we really need to you know, talk to the experts, find out what the data is telling us, and make sure we're addressing the whole system and make sure we're providing transit where it needs to be um provided at the right times and the right amount of transit to, to really make folks um comfortably using it and really make it worth their time. Thanks.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell, please.
Thank you. This is a, a issue that lots of people are working on. Uh, and the question is, you know, how do we get more people riding transit? How do we serve more areas? Uh, want to thank the state legislature for their work as part of their transportation package. They included funding for kids ride free. And so as of now, on any of the Pierce Transit lines, anyone under eighteen years of age can uh ride that transit for free. Um, and so that's creating greater access uh in the areas where there's already service. But how do we increase it, which I think is the important one? And one thing to, to know about Pierce Transit is it is the lowest-funded transit agency in the state. We need to look at how we fund transit and find different ways to fund it. Right now, it's currently on a sales tax. Currently, they collect six tenths of a, a, a percent sales tax to fund Pierce Transit. You up in Snohomish County, it's one point two percent. They collect twice as much sales tax to fund their uh transit. And for a rich uh community like Snohomish County or Yolda Belvy area, they have a lot more funding because they're coming in through sales tax. So we need to make sure that we look at how we're getting the funding in and finding ways to expand both frequency span uh in the areas. We need to go out to the areas that voted themselves out uh many uh couple decades ago and help them to vote themselves back into the service area. Uh, they're already going into the community, spending the sales tax. They deserve the service.
Thank you, Marty.
Next question. If elected, how would you change the Pierce County Sustainability Plan? Paula Lonergan?
I have reviewed um the current plan, and at this point, I don't know that I would make substantial changes. I'm sure there are people who would uh not agree with me, but I think we have something in place right now that will meet uh current need. There are some aggressive goals to uh reduce uh greenhouse gases and um to um do other things like that, maybe move to a point where everything is all electric as far as heating our homes and the vehicles we drive. I'm not sure we're ready for that at this point, but I would be open to looking at it. But for the time being, I think the county council has done a pretty good job and staff are looking at through the growth management plan and some other planning tools. Things that we might do in the future, and I would be open to looking at what we can do without imposing uh a mandate on people to do something radical that um maybe would drive up the cost of living here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Robin Denson?
Yes, you know, I agree that this county council has done a great job coming up with a good plan and I'm, I'm excited to support it. I think what we need is another champion. I'm sorry, my, my cat wants to be part of this conversation. We need another champion who's action-oriented and really committed to the environment to push this through and keep incorporating some real specific strategies so that we're seeing the success that we want to see in twenty thirty in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. We're very fortunate again that the Inflation Reduction Act actually has incentives and a set aside to um to help folks that want to convert their natural gas heat to electric heat pumps. I mean, we should be all over this in Pierce County. Let's jump on board. Let's be a model. Let's help connect folks to these dollars and really, really make, you know, some forward momentum and, and more conversions to electric heat pumps. Um, we can also hear the county champion decarbonization of our county buildings. That's something that, that we should be doing. We should be putting our money where our mouth is. And we really need to look at building codes and standards. We want to do that in collaboration with the building industry. Again, I'm about bringing everybody to the table. Let's look at what incentives we have. Let's look at what federal funding we have, and let's work together to make sure that our housing really is the housing of the future. Housing that's going to be healthy and cost-efficient for our homeowners and our renters while also moving us in a real positive direction environmentally.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell?
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm very proud of the sustainability plan that we've put in place so far. Uh, I'm just reflecting on one of my colleagues at the time, and I don't serve with them now, but they voted no on it, saying that sustainability was an offensive word to them. And so how far we've come from it being seen as offensive to having a plan in place, to having the next steps that we need to get to with decarbonization, with greenhouse gas reductions, uh with fish barrier removal. We know that when much of our uh planning over the years has not really taken the environment into consideration, and now we have lots of uh roads and culverts that uh salmon get upstream and it stops them. And so we need to continue to work with local tribes, the state and federal, uh to remove uh dozens and dozens of congested uh berms with pipes going through them and open that up and daylight them so that the fish can come through. Because we know that the ecology and that the health of Puget Sound is tied very much key to the salmon in our community. Uh, that uh without that, if the salmon collapses, we lose so much. And so we also need to make sure that we're addressing pollution up and down, PFAS, make sure that we're going after forever chemicals and getting them out of our systems. Uh, there, we're already finding them in newborn babies, and we need to make sure that we're uh getting all these chemicals out of our uh ecosystems. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Nancy Daly Slotnick?
Well, some of the top things that I would like to see are things that help our waterways. Um, one of the things that I have talked to a lot of people about is how we mitigate our storm drains. Currently, we have a huge amount of runoff from our roads going directly into the Puget Sound by our waterways because those storm drains aren't, don't have a good filtration in them. Um, we found out a few, or we've known for over a decade that what's killing our fish is uh a chemical that's found in our tires. And so that tire dust ends up on our roadways, and if we don't have good filtration between our roadways and our waterways, that goes straight into our water and it's literally poisoning our fish. So the culverts are really important. Um. Again, we've got several plans in place for some of our newer transportation ways, like, like the Canyon Road Extension Project. Getting rid of some of those culverts that are blocking our salmon habitat is, is part of that plan. But we also got to have to make sure that the chemicals in our, on our roads aren't ending up in our waterways. Um, I was out a couple weeks ago when uh at the Puyallup Tribe's canoe landing site where they were planting trees that will help mitigate that very thing, getting the, the water come, coming off the roadways. So we've got to continue to do those kind of environmentally conscious things that improve our waterways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next question. Washington State's election system of vote by mail, segregation of databases, and other systems are very secure. And the ballot processing can be observed by the public through the political parties and/or the League of Women Voters to validate this. What additional measures, if any, do you believe are necessary for Pierce County? Nancy Daly Slotnick?
Well, thank you. I have had the privilege of being one of those observers at our county um for, for the last several years. And I, I can't necessarily speak to every county in our state, but I can say that here in Pierce County, we have really good protections in place, including the, the air gap between our computer systems and so that they're not being fed directly into the internet. Um. I've watched that processing starting all the way from the, the sorting, the scanning of those ballots, all the way through the um the signature verification process. And I feel confident that here in Pierce County, we probably have some of the, the best voter integrity uh programs in the state. Um, and I think our state kind of leads the nation in that. So um, I think we just keep doing what we're doing and, and go with some of the things that uh our former Secretary of State Kim Wyman put in place. Some of the things that Julie Anderson put in place. And um, you know, ten years ago, it wasn't as secure as it is now, but uh we've made great progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Paula Lonergan, please.
Okay, I have also been an elections observer. I've done so for about twelve years. I have not done, uh, I've not observed within the last two years, but I have the, uh, I don't know if it would be a privilege, but I have had the opportunity to see how we used to process ballots uh as compared to how we're doing it now. And I feel very confident in how things are being done. I think I do not disagree uh at all with what Nancy has said. My difference is, I would say we will have to always be diligent to make sure that we are monitoring any opportunities for anyone to get into our systems to change things. I think we need to do just a little more monitoring as it relates to making sure that we uh verify that the people who are registered to vote actually are living here. I've actually spoken to an individual who indicated that he votes in Washington, but he also votes in another state. And I think that's a problem, so we just need to do a little more monitoring. But as far as the actual um sending in your ballot and opening it and reviewing signatures and all the rest, I feel very confident in that process. And the fact that we could actually go back and audit when uh ballots are scanned to make sure that everything is accurate and uh everything was read correctly, I feel very good about that. And I too believe we have a very good system in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Marty, or I apologize. Robin Denson, please.
Yes, I'm very confident in our system here, and I'm very proud of the way Washington handles its elections. Um, I have to say I brag a lot to folks who live in other states that are friends of mine because I think we do such a good job not only of making it super easy to vote, making it comes to you, it's free to mail back or to drop in the ballot box. I love our voter pamphlets. People have plenty of time to look through the information in the pamphlets, look up folks' websites, you know, attend forums. I, I really think that we do a fantastic job and, and we're really lucky. Just couldn't be easier. I do think one thing we could do that isn't um, isn't about the legitimacy of the election system is we could do a better job, you know, we're always trying of reaching out to everyone and getting more people registered to vote, particularly marginalized communities, underrepresented communities, communities that maybe are not accustomed to this system or maybe don't have as much faith in the system, really bringing them in, inviting them to be part of the process and encouraging them um to participate and letting them know how important their vote is. I think we can always do more um around that and, you know, making sure we've got information available in different languages and, you know, making sure that, that what we're sending out is, is always culturally acceptable and inappropriate. We've got a wonderful um Equity Review Committee now that's part of the county council. Um, so maybe that's a group that can take a look at things and just make sure that we're really being inclusive.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell, please.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. You know, I believe in the integrity of our elections uh and that we have uh done a great job here in Pierce County. Uh, I've been out there toured it, uh spoken with our current county auditor Julie Anderson. Um, and I think she's really set a model for what we need to be doing when we're looking at election integrity. I've also been part of the canvassing board that then looks at the ballots where they're not sure of voter intent and where it goes to a three-person panel. and where it goes to a three person panel um that looks at it and tries to uh understand what the voter intent is. The amount of effort they go to to make sure that it's verified, that people's votes get received and that it is uh voter intent is achieved uh is incredible and they do a great job. I want to add on to to what was said, though, uh what I think is also equally important is voter participation. Um too many times we see an anemic turnout uh at so many of our elections. Not only do we need great turnout at our, you know, presidential elections and uh you know, our congressional elections, we need the turnout in the smaller elections, the primary elections, the spring elections. All these are important issues that really guide the way that we live. And so how do we make sure that we're registering more people, but most important, providing a level of services governance that people want to participate in the voting process and want to participate in governing. And that is on us to create trust that their vote will count and that we will do good work with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
We're coming to the end of our questions and I want to remind the audience one last time, if you have questions to please call, not text, two five three three zero six 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 one. So questions about housing were discussed in detail at the forum held last week by the Affordable Housing Consortium and the League of Women Voters. But there was insufficient time to address one question sent in by an audience member, so I'll pose it here. What is your view of the county executive proposal for community first villages to provide permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless Pierce County residents? Robin Denson?
Yes, you know, I'm excited about any effort to address the different needs of our homeless population. Folks are have entered into um being unhoused for a variety of different reasons and folks are at different stages and did need different things. There are some folks that just need some rental subsidies, some folks that need some budgeting assistance, hopefully a lot of folks that we can prevent from getting into homelessness. But there are some folks that this community village is intended to address that really need permanently supportive housing. These are folks that I mean, there's a chance that hopefully with some services, they can move up the housing continuum into increased levels of self sufficiency that that should always be the goal. But there's some, there are some folks too that are just always going to need some assistance. So you know, I've been excited about what I've seen so far. I love the community um the community nature of this because what I've seen in some of the homeless encampments around town, which you know, aren't great and and it's not something that we want to continue having in our community. But it's a community of folks that are looking out for each other and are connected. And so I like that this model incorporates that community, incorporates a lot of services and and builds the relationships with service providers that that hopefully some of the folks can work their way out of the unhoused situation. The one thing I will note is I want to make sure that we've got enough funding for other other interventions, for rental subsidies, for um diversion programs, for tiny home villages and single room occupancy. For for some of those folks that can work their way out of homelessness, I want to make sure we've got funding for that as well.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell?
Thank you. Uh one thing to uh note that the uh uh community village proposal is just one of many proposals of in many directions we're working on. Uh many of the things that uh Robin just mentioned there with ensuring that we're we're buying hotels and converting them for permanent supportive housing or homelessness housing. Uh but with respect to this village, um it we're we're still doing our due diligence on it, making sure. But I've been out visiting the site that they've uh selected and and are looking at. I think it's extremely well placed in an area that really needs the services. Uh make sure that we're uh building it up and then providing the services around it. So we're talking about a a couple hundred housing units, but they're talking about a large agricultural component too. So that people can work onsite. And if you've ever driven out uh Spanaway Loop, you know, they have the new fruit on the loop, which they want to make sure that they have fruit stands all up and down. And this is going to allow people who who are living there to participate in, you know, selling the fruits and vegetables that they're helping to grow. Um and and that's a big part of it. And also bringing services out to them are going to allow us to be able to get services to other people in the area who may be facing homelessness. When it really comes to it, we've got to be doing homelessness as a countywide approach. Because we know that someone who finds themselves homeless in rural Pierce County has a better chance of success with services in rural Pierce County than to say you have to pack up what little community you have and you have to move to downtown Tacoma and get yourself back on your feet. I think it's a good proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Paula Lonergan?
I've had a chance to look at the model in Austin. I have not gone to Austin. But I've done a little bit of research regarding how the program was set up there and looking at what is being proposed here. Initially, I wasn't very sure about it, but I feel very comfortable with it because I do believe there is a significance um segment of our community that will need permanent supportive housing and many of the individuals in Austin are senior citizens. And so for that group to be in a structured environment where they are contributing to their housing and they have services provided, I think that's an excellent model. And for them to have a sense of community, that is also very important, too. I do agree that we have a variety of resources dedicated to helping homelessness at various stages. I think we need to do a better job of uh making sure it's safe, that people do not become too dependent on government to provide housing for them and that they can actually get settled, get into a place where they can go to. And for those who are the working poor, those who just need a bit of help for a period in time and are ready to move on to something better, that they have that opportunity and we can help them do that. And I think the investments we've made in pride providing emergency shelters and other things are very important that we continue to be able to fund also. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Nancy Daly Slotnick?
Well, I've been very excited about this model for quite some time. Uh several years ago, I took the opportunity to start looking into the tiny home model for homelessness and went down to Thurston County to see the model that they have on a much smaller scale at Coyote Village. That model has been so successful that they, the uh State Department of Veterans Affairs partnered with them for a tiny home village in Ordin by the Soldier's Home and another one in Shelton specifically for our homeless veterans. Though so those, one of the things that I think makes this model so successful is that it's not free. It's a hand up, not a handout. Um the residents are expected to pay one third of their income as rent. And they also are expected to not use illegal substances in those facilities. Um the one in Coyote Village is strictly clean and sober. Uh my understanding is that this one will allow anything that's legal. But um I think that it's really important that we protect those living there who are in recovery from those who might still be using uh substances, even even legal substances uh that might be a temptation for them. But I am very much on board with this model. I think one of the most compelling things I heard was when uh council member Dave Morell went down and visited the tiny home village and he talked about his experience there. And he talked about the people who, when they got their new home, uh were afraid to go inside because they didn't really believe that it was theirs and that they were going to be able to keep it. So I want to see us bring our homeless people to something they know they can keep. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
This next question is our last question. What economic development measures do you support for Pierce County? Robin Denson, please.
Oh my gosh, so many. I love economic development. I started my career working for a Main Street organization, so I'm passionate about that. I I'm very involved with our Chamber of Commerce um and our waterfront alliance, which is in a Main Street organization itself. One of the things that that I will highlight here, because it can be a little controversial, is working on promoting green industries in Pierce County and really setting up Pierce County and the Tacoma area in particular around the tide flats as really being a leader in green hydrogen and green industry. Making sure what it's really important is that we bring everyone along with us. We bring labor along and make sure that folks have the skills to move up into these new industries and and have good living wage jobs for their families, that we bring the education community along to make sure that we're preparing our our children for careers in these in these groups and in these new industries, to make sure we're working closely with our tribes and the environmental community. I wholeheartedly believe that you can be uh an environmental advocate like myself as well as somebody who's passionate about economic development and bringing everyone to the table and and really moving forward. This is the story of Tacoma where it's easy to be green and whereby attracting, you know, a green hub and we've got some great potential there, we're going to attract other green industries and really, really put ourselves forward. Not looking at industries in the past, but past, but really looking to develop ourselves as as a city that's looking forward to the future and is sustainable and healthy for everyone.
Thank you, Robin. Paula Lonergan, please.
Would you do me a favor and please repeat the question?
What economic development measures do you support for Pierce County?
Okay. I I've watched over the last two or three decades where we have uh encouraged companies to come into Tacoma, for example, they will stay for a while. Or maybe in Pierce County, I'm thinking about Intel in Dupont, and then they leave. There's a reason why we cannot somehow bring, encourage industry and business into our county and somehow keep them here. And I'm concerned about that. I don't know what of the details of what has been done to encourage different businesses and industries to come here, but I think we need to learn from our lessons where people have come. They've stayed for about 10, 15 years and then those jobs take off. I have worked for Employment Security Department for half of my career in state government approximately. And so there are things that we can do to provide incentives for businesses to come in. We have a workforce, we should have a workforce that is ready and uh able to work. And it's in more industries than have been mentioned thus far. We have to have people who are able to work in entry level jobs and then getting the training and whatever else they need so that they can move up and then progress and get that living wage job that they need so that they want to stay here in Pierce County because they know that they can thrive here and they can afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Nancy Daly Slotnick, please.
Thank you for that question. Um several years ago, I heard a statistic uh touted by some of our elected officials at the state level that Washington had the most small business startups of any state in the country. But that elected official ignored the fact that uh the SBA, uh the Small Business Administration said that we also had the highest number of business closures. So we have to be doing things to incentivize continued businesses that 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 once a business gets started here in our in our community, that is able to continue. So how do we incentivize them? How do we make sure that we keep their tax burdens affordable, low? We keep their overhead low so that they don't feel like they they're better off moving out of ours, out of our county and or out of our state. Uh we have to do things to make it uh to make things amenable to small business and to their continued success. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Marty Campbell, please.
Thank you. I was uh age 22 when I opened up my first business, a small retail shop, uh video rental, and then opened up a CD store. Uh by 25, I had two stores and built them up. And I think we need to do a better job of developing a culture of entrepreneurship, allowing people to put themselves, their families, their friends and neighbors to work. We know that um if we start 100 new businesses, two or three of them are going to make it big. The next Frank Russell, Almond Roca, we have great success stories out of our county that that come. That didn't begin with, you know, batting a thousand percent with small businesses, but we need to find a way to support those. What we've been building up over the last few years is really a um uh many accelerators and uh programs to help people, things like Maritime Blue focused on uh businesses that are on our waterfront and water dependent businesses, helping them get started. Programs like uh Vibe Tacoma, Search Tacoma, all focusing one in biotech in different areas. And I think most importantly, Pierce County itself stepped up and through the uh ARPA funds, we created a BIPOC incubator to help uh BIPOC small businesses uh get established and to thrive. Over 200 so far and recently we were just awarded an international award for the work we're doing, supporting BIPOC businesses here and across the entire county. So we need to lead with entrepreneurship. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. It is now time, go on ahead, I apologize.
We're going to move now to closing statements and these will be in the reverse order of your opening statements and you'll have one minute each, starting with Paula Lonergan.
Well, I want to thank everyone for this forum. I'm sorry I was late, but I'm glad I'm here now. I am running for Pierce County Council and I'm running because I'm passionate about serving our district. The district consists of the north end of Tacoma and Gig Harbor and everything on the other side of the bridge up to the Kitsap County border. We have a very diverse district, rural, uh small town, I'm sorry, small city, large city and also unincorporated Pierce County. I want to serve that group. I believe that my years of public service, four years in the military, one year working for the city of Tacoma and 30 years working in state government, I have a varied background. I am prepared to take this on and I believe I will provide true leadership to address the main issues in our county uh first and foremost, which is public safety and addressing issues of crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Robin Denson?
Yes, thank you so much. Pierce County is a beautiful place to live. We have a lot of assets and we have a lot to be proud of here. I know I'm proud to live here. But we have a lot of work to do to improve the quality of life for everyone equally throughout our community. I have knocked on over 9,000 doors myself since I started this journey um a year ago. And people want an end to the crime wave. People want long lasting solutions to homelessness. People want more mental health and behavioral health and substance abuse services. People want good transit. We've heard that tonight. And people want a healthy environment. I'll bring to the county council my experience in local government, my experience working as a nonpartisan policy professional for the state House of Representatives, my experience as a business owner. Um and it's really, really important to me to bring everyone together, diverse viewpoints to come together and really come up with the best policies that folks can buy into and that are good for the whole community. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work and I look forward to working with all of you and and ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Marty Campbell?
Thank you. Uh and thank you very much for putting this forum on. It's so critical that we have the opportunity to reach out and talk with voters directly through forums like this. That means I've been out talking with voters throughout this entire campaign for the last four years. One thing they all have in common is they love Pierce County. They love where they live, they love the community, they love their friends and neighbors. They're concerned about real issues of homelessness, crime and uh rising inflation. While we not might not be able to solve each of those, we need to be doing what we can at every turn to make sure that we're addressing key issues and making sure that we're keeping everyone engaged and involved in the solutions to those issues. I thank you all very much for taking the time to listen. Feel free to go onto my website, email me, call me. Uh if you want to talk any further on these issues and I'd be honored to have your vote in this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Nancy Daly Slotnick?
Well, I want to, first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I I agree it is it is critical that we have forums like this. Um I've been a resident of this of this district, uh the the fifth council district for 30 years and a resident of Pierce County for 35 and it is a great place to live. In recent years, I've watched the crime rise and our our addiction and our homelessness populations increase. And as I knock on doors and I'm I'm at about 10,000 doors personally that I've knocked on and I hear over and over again about shootings every night, about homeless people wandering wandering through our backyards and leaving needles where we can't allow our children to go out and play. I want to get that taken care of. I live in the most diverse district in the county and I want to do what like I can do to serve all of the population of the Fifth Council District. So I hope I can count on your vote and uh, I'll thank you for this evening.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks to everyone for your participation in this forum. Thanks to the candidates for District Five, Marty Campbell and Nancy Daly Slotnick. And for District Seven, Robin Denson and Paula Lonergan.
Thank you also to the nonpartisan co-sponsors in alphabetical order. AAU Puyallup and Tacoma, Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, Grit City Co-op, Latinos Unidos of South Sound, NAACP, South End Neighborhood Council, Summit Waller Community Association, Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, the Urban League, Vibrant Schools and the YWCA.
Be sure to mail your ballots in before Election Day, November 8th. Put them in a drop box no later than 8:00 PM on Election Day, November 8th.
Before you vote, also check out the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, vote411.org and go to votewa.org to check your voter registration. Both sites identify ballot issues and candidate information specific to your own voting precinct. We encourage everyone to use these resources in addition to the standard voters guide.
You will find our other candidate forms and a link to the recording of this one at our website, l w v t p c dot org. Thank you all for participating tonight and have a great evening.